Just want to call the meeting to order. So first thing is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Everyone briefly rise.
I have the Pledge of Allegiance to flag the United States of America to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, as you're getting ready, if I may, there were three executive sessions by the board. One held on July 9th, one held on July 30th, and one held right before this meeting on August 6th, all of which were just to discuss matters of litigation and potential real estate acquisitions. Mr. Chairman, I also note that we have a very light crowd here this evening. This is a very light agenda. Mr. Zankowski may be a little under the weather, so we would like to move this along as quickly as possible. Of course, anybody can make public comment, but I think we're going to try to move through the agenda fairly quickly and not have the traditional managers and solicitors reports during the meeting. Thank you.
I agree.
I will ask the board if they've already gone through the minutes and have addressed everything with the staff.
I'm sorry?
Just asking, just a general question, if you've looked through the minutes and if you've addressed everything with the staff here.
I have nothing to address.
So I'm going to move forward with a motion to approve the minutes of June 4th, 2025, under the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
You just want to have a general motion for the consent agenda?
I could, I could revise the motion and say we have a motion to approve the minutes and the financials in the bills list for July 2025 and August 2025.
Do I have a second for that motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Any questions?
Okay, any questions? Sorry.
Okay, any questions from? No, no questions. Okay, I'll move forward. All in favor?
Aye.
So we are going to move right now into the business agenda. So the first item on the agenda is item A. If this is concerning. Concerning. Yeah, so I want to just go forward with the motion. I move that the East Vincent Township Board of Supervisors approve the proposal from Caliber Restoration LLC to perform the Mauer Drive Culvert Rehabilitation in the amount not to exceed $10,000.
Second.
Discussion.
Question, Bob. Will the funds come out of the capital fund for Barton Meadows?
This is not sewer, this is storm where.
I see. Oh, my mistake. Sorry, sorry.
General fund, correct.
Yes, yes, thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you both, actually all three.
And Bill, for some of these that are here, I would like you to just let me know at times as we go through these, if any of these were even planned for this year from a budgeting perspective.
Yeah, I can say all three of them were not.
Were not. Okay, thank you.
Uh, will this include insurance?
Are you asking if Culvert is insured?
Okay, flagging.
Is that your question? Is Cul- is Caliber insured?
Does the price include insurance? It does. How about flagging? Okay, alright.
Was there, I saw that there was a lot of conditions there, but not being responsive.
That's, that's home.
Oh, maybe it's home. Okay.
Sorry.
Alright, so was there any other questions, discussions at this point? So I'll move forward.
No, no.
The audience. And the audience. Is there anyone online?
Can I call a question?
Okay, say all in favor.
Aye.
Moving on to item B on the agenda. I move that the East Vincent Township Board of Supervisors approve the proposal from Caliber Restoration LLC to perform the Seven Stars Road Culvert Rehabilitation in an amount not to exceed $12,000.
Second.
So open this up for discussion.
Right, so Haley and Bob, Mike, I assume that this includes insurance, flagging the whole nine yards? Yes, okay.
And they had a lot of the same. When we went through this, we're not, we're not concerned about any of the things that they have saying that they don't want to want.
Not this one.
That's not the same.
Still like this.
It's a different company.
Maybe it's home, it's home.
It's the third one.
The third one, yeah. Sorry, it was on my mind, so I was thinking about it.
That's on my mind too.
I will open this up for the floor here, for the public. Is there any questions on this item agenda?
Let's come up front to ask.
Yes, if you could, if you could please come up and. But.
Well, but to the question, I assume, I assume it's a larger job.
It is.
Okay. Meaning more, more than.
Larger pipes.
Okay, there we go.
Okay.
You said forty-seven, seven stars.
So not, not west seven stars, seven stars.
Are there any other questions?
Call the question.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Now, now we're going. Now we're going to, alright.
We're saving the best for last, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, this is the last one. On item C of the agenda, I move that the East Vincent Township Board of Supervisors take no position on the zoning hearing board application for veto Satori. Sotero at 3805 Schuylkill Road. The second point is refer the application to the planning commission for review and comment, and three, authorize the township solicitor to attend the zoning hearing.
Second.
Okay, any discussions here by the board?
No. Is Mr. Sotero here by any chance?
Please.
Sandy Heidel, 556 Park Road. Since we are near this, we will receive a letter saying about when this will be, the hearing will take place and that we can be present. It touches my property. Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Anything online?
Nothing. Call the question.
All in favor?
Aye.
On to item D on the agenda, I move that the East Vincent Township Board of Supervisors approve the proposal from the Impact Group to conduct a township-wide survey in an amount not to exceed $33,000. Yes.
So I just want to say that managers and Kowski and I met with the Impact Group again, discussed this, and the cost is reduced by 5,000 from the previous proposal that we received.
Now, I was, I was going to bring this up because it wasn't in the minutes last time, and we talked about measures of success, milestones, all those things. I didn't see anything here on, in here that was any different than what I saw previously. So do we have a list?
So this will include what they call whiteboard sessions, which will, we will go through with the staff, with residents, and go through everything from start to finish.
And what I'm going to recommend to the board is that, I think, and this is what we had talked about last time, I think we might have to do this sort of an installment for paying up here.
Second.
No, we're just discussing, I'm just discussing in general, but if you, if you don't want me to discuss this, this point, then.
Why I do, but shouldn't it be second before, before it's a session, it's not seconded, there's something to discuss.
Okay.
So, okay, well, I need one second, because I cannot.
I'll second it for conversation sake.
Okay, so going back to the points from last meeting two months ago, I think we should consider this in milestone installment. So if we reach a certain goal here, or something that is part of this survey that we agreeable to, like for us establishing certain goals, and you know, one of the goals, I'll just say this, like I said last time, I think this has to not be just like three or 400 residents, or even less than that, or 100 residents. I think this has to be, considering that we have 7,000 residents here, some of these are, of course, children and other minors, so if we, if we reduce that number down to, let's say, even half to 3,000, I would want to see there would have to be some sort of high percentage here, not just 100, 200 people that would be surveyed. We've often talked about the fact that if we want to understand what's, how the township thinks and what they would want, we definitely have to have something much more than a token percentage. And if the rest of the board agrees with that, I would like to see this agreement model changed so that it reflects what we had discussed in the meeting from two months ago.
Well, whatever, whatever you get, if this goes forward, whatever we get must be, in my view, statistically significant.
Exactly.
And one, two, or 300 out of, out of the 9,000 or 7,000, whatever it is, is not a statistical, statistically significant number. So I'm not sure what the number is, not sure what, what the, if we applied fundamentals, fundamentals of statistics and stats, statistics that I learned back in college and have already forgotten. I'm not sure what number that will be. The larger issue for me really is, are we, are we, at the end of the day, are we getting what we need? And can we get this information without having to spend $33,000 on an external, external, external company? I'm still not convinced that we need this. I think we do it ourselves. I think a, I mean, we probably have our, collectively, we probably have our finger on the pulse a lot, a lot better and a lot more than we give ourselves credit for.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. I apologize if I sound funny. It's swollen lymph nodes, so I think this is a very critical and important survey that has to be done. It should be done independently so that it's not skewed towards a certain way. We want to truly know what all the residents of this community are listening to. I think 2,500 would be a grand slam to be able to have that statistically with these kind of surveys. 500 people responding is, is big. I would like to see us at 2,500. We're going to push as hard as we can through the HOAs, residents, through the website, through all the, through EVA, all these different groups within the community. But I think when you look at the financial future of the township, we need to hear from residents. You know, what is a priority? What's important? Are you willing to pay more taxes? Do you want to keep taxes the way they are? These are the types of things that you're talking about a financial future here, and you need to hear from everyone in the community. Because I think if we did it in-house, I think we would skew it. And I don't think we want to be able to have that. In this way also too, you've given everybody an opportunity to participate. If you don't participate, then I guess you're okay with that, but this is something that we will reach out, we will mail to every household too as well as part of this, to say it's critical that you take, you know, five, 10 minutes of your time to participate and let us know what you're thinking. I, I think this is probably the most important piece that we have for the future of the township. Because as we're looking to, and as this board wants to do, is build long-term plans, a financial plan, five years out, 10 years out. You know, costs have gone up. Costs have gone up on every homeowner too as well. And, you know, if we want to maintain what we have here and keep costs down, again, I think this is going to be probably one of the most important documents we'll have for budget purposes and as long-term planning. I apologize for my talk.
No, 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 it's fine. Bob, I don't think anybody can disagree that we should have unfiltered information. But I don't know if I can agree that, that we would skew it, we would skew the questions, we would skew the information. I don't, I just don't see that happening. And I, I think back to my days and my company, which I worked for 30, for the 30 years. Multiple, we had multiple, multiple occasions when HR at our home company, our home office in Denmark, coordinated with HR, HR offices and off, the satellite office and putting ours in depth on him, and surveyed, surveyed the employees. They, they wanted to know what we really think. Those surveys were generated in-house. And judging from the, from the tone, content, and the manner in which the questions were phrased, trust me, there was nothing, nothing skewed about them. So I think we have the ability to do it with, with, with the minimal bias. I don't, I, I'm just not convinced at this point, Bob, that we need to go to an outside service, but I'm, but I'm willing, I'm willing to, I mean, I'm willing to listen.
Because I think too is many times, and this is, I'm just going past, based on my past experience, people are afraid or concerned about responding directly back to the government if it's something that's not thought of. People think, well, there's this black book, and I've heard people say that, just not making this up, that my name's going to be down there because I'll know what I said. Somehow I think by keeping it independent, keeping it away from the township, it's a very clean process so that no one can say or accuse anyone of saying, well, you know, you forgot about these, you, you know, you took so many of these in and you really didn't like these, so maybe these went away. I think having an independent firm do this. And again, I, I don't think this is very expensive to be able to do this and to get a real clean response from residents who may have varying opinions based on what the township spends its money on.
And I, Bob had mentioned all this last time as well, and I would just like to add to what you were saying to Marcus. Many of the other companies where I was at when they did the company surveys, it was always handled outside because there was always the concern that executives would find out what certain people really thought if they did it in-house. And so they always farmed it out to someone else. And that, again, that was, these are my experiences. Yours may be different, but. Yeah, but they, this is what we've always, the companies again that I belong to, this is what we did. And I can understand that because if you thought it was being collected by HR or by some other group within the organization, and, and you were to really answer honestly, there, there would be concerns about, you know, something would be happening to you. So without that hanging over your head, and, and we did say this last time, that will be one of the reasons why we want to go forward with this. Now, the cost is high, of course, we, we all mentioned that last time as well. And we're trying to find a way to be reasonable with, with this because we talked about milestones and whether if, if certain things were met, like for gathering the appropriate goals and meeting certain statistical numbers that we definitely want, not, not a few hundred or 100 or 200 that was mentioned in the last meeting. I, I think we could then be agreeable to move forward, but again, that's, I think of having a milestone installment plan where they say meet certain objectives as they go through the process here, and you think that things are moving forward, then we can approve the next installment.
Or as the case in be, pull the plug.
Or the case pull the plug, that's right.
I think that would be built into the contract, Mr. Chairman, if one were to be entered into, so that at any time, if the township were dissatisfied with the results that it was getting along the way, the contract would be terminated at that point in time, and whatever the allocated amount that had already been incurred would be spent. But outside of that, it would not. So I think with your milestone idea along the way, it makes a lot of sense.
Actually, Joe, if we're going to do this, I'd rather see a termination for convenience clause.
We could absolutely put a termini- I, no problem.
Yeah, that'd be better. So just in case we change our minds, we just say, this just doesn't look right there. Whatever, whatever the reason, we don't, you know.
Correct.
The good, the good thing about termination for convenience is we don't need a reason to terminate.
That's right.
But I do, I, Ed, you don't think that?
I do.
Go. George.
To Bob's point, if we're getting 2,500 people to respond out of the 7,000 residents, you're basically talking about $13 per household to try and get the voice of the community and utilize that information to help to revise the comprehensive plan. So I think it would be $13 well spent per household to get that voice. And I, but I agree with everything else you're saying with the termination clause. If we're not meeting milestones, or if they've made specific warranties, then we have the ability to terminate it at, at that point. Again, I think it's $13 per household well spent.
Please.
Mary Etta Geis, 119 Keen Road. Could I ask, either way that you do it outside, how, will you be collecting people's names and addresses and or is this just like, for example, they're going to call me on the phone and ask me a few questions or whatever, but they're not going to be writing your name or your address or anything down.
Should be anonymous.
Do we know the process? Anonymous.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Monica Scriber, Valley Creek Lane. I want to remind you that you all had the leadership and foresight to vote on a communication committee for our township. Your volunteer groups came to you and asked you for this because we were having an issue with engagement. And so I don't know where we are with selecting individuals for these, this committee. But I would think that if you're going to undertake something of this size, you would want the communication committee to be part of it and work even with this company and make recommendations. There's something called a steering committee. I think gathering up individuals that could figure out, okay, we got a 15-page information sheet about this employee survey or township survey. But like all of you are bringing up, we really don't know much. And I like what you're saying about a clause where if we can't get so much percentage of engagement, we're really not going to be able to gauge what the township wants, what they want things to look like. And so this is a very expensive cart we're putting before the horse in the fact that you have individuals that are volunteering now that are saying, we want to engage with the township. Let's create something and let's, so I think before we go to the expense of something like this, I really think giving the communication committee a shot, forming that, and even meeting with this, this group. And for this much money, I don't know anything about governance with townships, but that's a lot of money. And so is this the only group that, that is, should we be looking at other companies that do this, engaging which one is going to fit our, our, our personality, our township? Bob, I trust what you're saying. It's not like I don't trust what you're saying, and you've worked with them before, but this is a lot of money. And, you know, I wanted to give you guys raises and everything else, so I'm pretty generous with what I think we should spend our money on. But the other thing is, you can do online surveys that are closed and safe, and people don't have to give their name, where you can still collect data. And so I don't know if any of that's being looked at, and I also think something itemized. So individuals that do have experience, or even a presentation that explains, we're going to do X, Y, and Z. Something other than just a blanket it, you know, this is what we do. Because again, if, if we're not getting a percentage, like I brought up for the comprehensive plan, the last one, what was it, 11% I think? Comment it. And so that's how the comprehensive plan was created. So we, we know, we know engagement is an issue, and so.
Let me, let me just pause it for a second. I just want to try to address some of the things that you're bringing up. Because I do think it's a great idea to have the communication committee to be involved, but I, I have a recommendation as to where. So, and I think about this from some of the companies I belong to. When we were looking at improving a process or changing things in the organization, we would often get together, and this comes from people, some people here know this about Six Sigma. It's a way of improving a process and getting all the input in. So if we're looking to establish goals, and then we focus in on those areas that are going to have the greatest impact, one of the things would be to have the communication committee involved with the staff, with this group, to talk about, here's the, here's how we want to conduct this survey. As these are some of the points that you just mentioned, and you'll be part of the goal-setting process, and you'll be providing valuable input, you know, for the staff here, representing the community in the goal-setting process. So that would be my recommendation. On, on one of the other points you had mentioned about the online surveys, I, I think some people know that you could probably set up your own online survey, like through Google and some other places. And you can collect, you can, you can put questions out there, and you can collect all these statistics of when people answered. The thing is, the perception from many people, even myself, is when I see some of these online surveys, I don't know who has access to it. And I don't know what they're going to do with it. And then if I had to put my name and stuff down there, are they going to take that and then, you know, publish it out somewhere? Do you know what Craig Damon said about this online survey? You know, there's things like that. So I, I would caution against it because even in my businesses, when we have had, we've done these surveys internally, we really want to know what the employees have stated. We always went outside because we, we wanted the employees to feel that there, there wasn't, there wasn't something going on where it's going to be collected by upper management, and then they're going to go out and, you know, they're going to, they're going to say, hey.
Sure.
I'm pulling you into the office, not, I, I had heard stories about that, you know, when I was younger, about people being pulled in, and people told me stories, and, you know, that's why a lot of these companies don't, don't do it anymore, you know, internally, because.
I'm just naive. I answer honestly.
Yeah.
Probably why I was severed from my, my last professional job, but.
But, but I just wanted to address some of your points there, as you were talking about.
You could do a pre though. You could do something very soft where it wouldn't be something so profound that people would be afraid, and you might be able to, I don't know, it would be something for a group collaborative. And if you think about our communication committee, when that is formed, we talk about these grants, and you know, the, is it the Baldwin Awards for state government-run government organizations? Is it Baldwin? They have it every year. It's like excellent awards. You mentioned that. So these are the things where you have a process, and when you go through it, you can present it and win money. You know, if you're a government entity. I think it's Baldwin. But you could, just like we talk about grants, and a percentage of the work is done with your volunteers of your organization or your government. It might be something to think about when you're approaching this whole thing, because you have individuals that, that want to help. You know, they want to engage. Thank you.
We love all volunteers.
Let me ask, add my two cents as well. I like the idea of formalizing the communications committee and having it work, and, I mean, collaboratively and cooperatively with, with the group, if, if we would like to do this.
Yes.
So I'm with you on that. In terms of online surveys, the concern I have is, is whether the information you're getting is really, is really reliable.
Sure.
You always get some, of course, somebody, somebody responding, responding verbally can do the exact same thing.
Right.
But I think, I, I think, I would hope you get more, more reliable information from a verbal, verbal reach out as opposed to an online reach out, but, you know, I may be wrong.
It, it's something that needs to be discussed with a collaborative group of people from the township and from this organization, I think. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
As part of the survey, boards and commissions would be involved with this, as part of that whiteboard session. So there, and then there are residents that are not on boards and commissions would also be involved with these focus groups. One thing I, I heard Monica talk about is, you know, we, the communications committee that would want to have our own flavor to this or put our own spin on that, or something to where, can I say, this is what East Vincent Township's about? You know, this communications committee. I think that's the reason why we don't want to, don't want to have internal, because then right from the start, you're, you're starting to say, well, this is what East Vincent is. That's a handful of people that are determining what that is. We want to hear what the community is saying and not having it watered or skewed and basically just ask, ask.
Direct, direct communication. So, but I think Monica too, I think if I, as I mentioned about being involved, I think you, I think any volunteer as part of the township would at least want to be involved and be part of the process, the goal-setting process, which is, you know, as. and be part of the process, the goal setting process, which is, you know, as everyone in the, the township here and we talked about some of the other committees, that's what they're gonna do too. So I think that's what you would probably want to see as well.
Craig, that's correct. Everyone, all the boards and commissions, the volunteers will be involved in this early process.
Sandy Hidal five five six Park Road. Um, I agree, and you know, I'd much rather spend money on something else. But I agree with doing an outside one because I know that the people who work here work very hard. Where are they gonna find time to put this together? I know they would get volunteers, but volunteers get tired after a certain point. And it falls through the cracks. You hire somebody, that's their job. They do it. So I'm, I'm thinking that it, and I've been involved with ones that people have done inside. And the questions that they asked, it almost leads you to make a certain response, which is frustrating. Because I'm thinking they didn't ask this, so you can't think outside the box. This sounds like you'd be thinking outside the box and not just what has always been. So I don't want to say spend the money, but I think it's a worthwhile thing.
Thank you.
All points well taken.
To online, okay. Hi Dana.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, yeah, Dana Shaphone ninety five Hearthstone Circle. I, I think I'm still slightly confused on the scope of this and when, and maybe I'm not on like in sync with what the definition, your definition of strategic plan is. I had asked that question, um, the question about is this going to, the survey to residents going to feed into the comprehensive plan? Because that wasn't stated in the proposal. Um, and I, I reread it, but I don't recall it being included in there. So I guess that's one of the questions. And then I also was thinking, maybe this has to do with more of our business processes because I saw that there was, you know, the staff would be a part of some focus groups or some sort of whiteboarding session. So I, I, I guess I'm still a little confused maybe on what the scope of this is for, what the scope would include. And when we say a strategic plan, what exactly does, does that mean? And to Craig's point about Six Sigma, um, I have a Six Sigma, a black belt in Six Sigma. And it's very much about work process, you know, so are we looking at how efficiently we run the township? Is that part of this? Um, and that's why the staff would be involved, you know, how do we? How do we work as efficiently as possible with delivering the highest quality possible? Or is this more about what the residents want to see as far as the future of the township? I think that's, I'm still not clear on that. So can someone clarify that or?
Yeah, I can try to clarify that. So.
All right.
Um, those are good questions, Dana. Um, this is towards the results here actually help feed the comprehensive plan. Where, where does this go? And we're looking at a update to the comp plan. This will be a big component of that. It also helps in the financial planning for the township for years to come. What are priorities that the township, really the residents really feel are important? Those are the two key hubs of this. I think meeting with the staff is one to get their impressions of, you know, what are the priorities that feed to the comp plan as well as the financial future of the township. It will involve the board, it will involve the various boards and commissions, uh, it will also involve residents. Uh, some of those will be from community groups and organizations, uh, to get a cross section, a good cross section of the residents of the township of what their feelings are in these particular areas, looking for the future here. Uh, the past is the past, this is building towards the future and what are our needs going to be, uh, in priorities? So these survey results will help establish those.
Dana, what, um, think, think back to when you were, um, in some of the organizations. You, you always have to get the right opinions of the stakeholders. So, so the residents are the stakeholders. And from a strategic standpoint, just to everything that Bob just said, uh, we need to get an opinion to the stakeholders. And that's, and then when you think about strategy and what you're going to do with that, that helps to establish your, how you're going to put together your strategy, just like you would do at a, at a business.
I think what Dan is asking, Danny, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, in large measure is opinions for what? Um, and I don't know if, if we can tell you today, tonight, Dana, what the what, what is, I think the what has to be defined, identified, defined and refined as, as part of the process.
Okay, I don't know if you can still hear me.
I can.
Yeah, it's called the voice of the client in Six Sigma. I totally understand that we're gonna go out and speak to residents. Where I was getting frankly confused is the scope of this. And it was seemed to be heavy on internal, not saying that we don't want to hear from the staff, but that's when I read the document, I got confused if we're, and I hear a lot about resident survey. So is this really a resident survey? And, and then let's say that's what it is and define. You know, it would be so helpful to see like what types of questions are we going to ask them and um, you know, what are we hoping to get out of this? And then that drives the comprehensive plan. So I don't know, I guess I'm confused on what, how that's different than the strategic plan. And maybe you see them as the same and they're just using the words interchangeably. Um, and it could just be a verbiage thing, but that's why I'm, you know, if I were up there and had to vote on it, I'd be like, well, not exactly sure why I'm doing it and what I'm going to get out of it. And therefore I'd be, it would be tough to vote on something like that. Um, I'm not saying, I absolutely agree that we're gonna, it's so critical that we speak and try to get as many of the residents to participate in this and that will feed into the comprehensive plan. I guess I'm, some of the ancillary things that seem to be built into it, I was questioning, how does that play into it? What, how does that, um, affect the comprehensive plan? And, you know, are those things really necessary or can they be maybe carved out of this and they happen as a separate function or process that the township would undertake? That's, that's kind of where I am with it. So.
No, I understand. And, uh, we also mentioned about the fact that we're gonna have milestones. So that if any point during this process, uh, we're not satisfied with the product, we can, we can end it.
Right, but I, again, I think what Dana's driving at is there's, we don't have enough clarity upfront in the contract.
Exactly. Yes, thank you.
What, what, what we are trying to accomplish, what we, what we, what we want to hear, I mean, what we want to ask. What are the topics for the survey? And, and again, my understanding is that's one of the things we're gonna be developing as part, part of this contract.
That's the point. Yes, the point. I mean, you, you, you can't say upfront, you want this, because then you're already producing the process.
Not saying that, I'm saying we should have a goal in mind of what we're shooting for here and how we're gonna use the information that we're going to get back. You have to first define. This is the, you know, there's here, I'll call it a problem, but it's not really a problem. This is what we want to find out. And then here's how we're going to go about it. And I'm just confused, like I said. Mark, I think you're understanding me a little bit better, maybe that, you know, I see all these other things that are happening within it and you know, maybe we don't need to grow it to be this big. If it's this key, important survey, resident survey, then let's say that that's what it is versus it's, we're coming up with a strategic plan. If maybe we add to that to say we're, we're out of this, we hope this will be an input to the strategic plan, which for a municipality is the comprehensive plan, then I feel like maybe we're connecting those dots a little bit more, but, um, thanks.
Then I, at the end of the day, if I, I vote for this thing, uh, voting with the understanding and the expectation that it is that, uh, it's, we're spending the money to find out what our residents think. Are we on the right path? Are we heading, are we, are we heading in a direction that's consistent and commensurate with uh, the interests, wants, needs and expectations of residents? And if not, then we, then we, then we have to adjust, uh, then we have to decide whether we adjust or we, whether we educate or both.
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could start this, this, um, proposal off with a problem statement. You know, the issue is we haven't gone out more broadly to our residents in a long while and we need to establish their voice. May, maybe that's what would help to put some grounding to this to understand why it's important and why, you know, you may spend the money on it.
Want to come back to something that Bob said, um, when we, we were talking about, uh, addressing some of the comments that, uh, uh, raised about the, uh, the need, the need to, to engage the communications committee. Each of the committees, boards and commissions will be involved in meeting with, um, with, with the, um,
Consultant.
The consultant. And so the consultant will be picking their brains, asking them, what's, I, I assume, what's important to you? What, what, what are you guys working on? What is significant to you in terms of, in terms of how, how what you do impacts the township? Um, there'll be, there'll be a, a public input as well, I guess, Bob, in the session.
Yeah, that'll be, there will be a selection, a selection group, random group, that will be just residents that aren't engaged or involved.
So based upon all that input, I, from, from that, I guess we'll identify, okay, here are the things we, we need to focus on for the purpose of this survey.
That's correct. And I will say that in a previous town, not too far from here, we went through the process and it was the same thing. There were a number of people fighting against the survey. Different terms, why they were fighting against it. But it was, you know, afraid of the unknowns, I think sometimes, what the results are gonna be. Here the township, really financially, um, there is no long-term financial plan of where we're at. I think that needs to be built and that ties back to taxes, you know, what, you know, is it something that the township, all the residents feel it is important that we maintain the real look, you know, do we want open space? Are you willing to pay for that? People may say no. Is it something that the historical aspect of the township, is that a priority? For you, is that something that, you know, we should maintain the history of this community? There are gonna be some tough questions, I think, are gonna be asked. But this is gonna be part of why you have those whiteboard sessions, those focus groups to get that determination. I think going back to Mark, correct me if I'm wrong here, but that will set the baseline of where these questions will be developed from. And it will be worthwhile to get this back because the township has some tough decisions to make coming. You have infrastructure issues, um, that we're going to need to fund. It, just operations, um, as well. And I think the last tax increase here in the township was how long ago Bill? Twenty-one, so we know that, you know, cost of, um, operations have gone up. Um, cost of repairs, all of that needs to be looked at, but I think this is a valuable tool to be used um, to help create that.
Am I still on?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I just think there just needed to be more in the proposal itself for a lot of this to be more self-evident. Um, because now we're hearing, you know, it's gonna drive to, of, a long-term financial outlook for us. And, you know, I just think some of those, those points were not included in the tie to the comprehensive plan, which I had asked at the last meeting and it sounds like that's there, but, um, yeah, it didn't change much. I, I don't really, I didn't compare the two, but
I don't think it changed.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think, you know, sort of kind of giving a little bit of a background, I, I called it a problem, not a problem statement, but you know what I'm saying? Here's a gap and this is what we want to do to address it. And here's how we're gonna go about it. I, some of that maybe being built in would have been, would have been helpful, um, and making sure with these milestones that we're getting to the goal. Whatever that goal might be at the end of this in terms of deliverables.
But if I can say, just at the end though, it's really gonna come down to what is the township going to do with this once we receive that? Um, to me, I don't, I wouldn't want to pigeonhole it because there may be things that come out of this survey that we're not even aware of, that we see come out. It's really the most important piece is what are we gonna do with it when we get it, the final results? Are we gonna act on it? Or are we just gonna set it on a shelf and say, well, we did this survey, we're gonna move forward? Uh, again, I see this as a valuable tool that I would not want to get pinned to only financial stuff and only comp plan. Because I think going through the comp plan update is going through the process of the boards and commissions are naturally gonna bring up some other things too. So, uh, I think this is a tool that can, you know, I would like to see it as wide open as possible, based on what we get as results.
Even, even a, um, a wide opener, widespread survey, uh, will give you information that ultimately can be used to develop or to, to take, when we look at the comp plan, take, they're taking into consideration. So whatever opinions we get will be opinions, will be of the input. And the input, the input will, will, will drive, will drive cer, uh, drivers in certain directions. Uh, they may be really, may relate specifically to the comp plan. But the natural, financial, financial path forward is part of the comp plan. The comp, the comp plan itself is, is a, is an amalgamation of, of, of various interests and, and points. Business, residential, development, open space, you name it. It's, it's, that's what, the operative word is comprehensive. So I, I, I hope when we talk about, uh, the, the comp plan in, in, in conjunction with the survey, we're not thinking in terms of a specific document.
I think we were talking about specifics. Yeah, you circled this all the way around now. It's been confusing. Okay, well then.
Yes, thank you, Craig.
Yeah, I think it's, it's getting confusing for me, uh, because you're saying one thing, go ahead, all right, because it's.
All, all, all I'm saying is that means that the, the opinions, with the opinions and input will be, will tell us what, will tell us what the residents think. And that, that will drive, that will drive some, in a wide, wide, wide range of, of directions.
If this was an established process, and I'm thinking to, just my comments here, to what Dana's talking about. When, when you have a process where you're talking about, um, I'm going to go through and look at what my stakeholders want. And I'm gonna go through, a lot of times, it's because you've already done this multiple times before and you're always trying to improve the process. Since we have not really done this, we've never since, since taken, uh, really a survey of the township to really try to gain a, an idea of where they want to go. I do agree with Bob, it sure has to be open. You can't, you can't nail this down as to in, in exact processing, it's gonna specifically go to this or this. I think we just have to be a little bit open this time and we'll get more specific as we move along. So hopefully I can button that up and.
I'm not sure he said anymore.
Okay, well, I just, maybe I just summed it up a little bit quicker there, but okay, so, um.
Anybody else?
So what I'm looking at this right now, just with the comments, uh, yeah, there was another person online. Okay, hi Christine.
How about right now?
We can hear you.
I have some similar questions to how Dana has been approaching this. And the linkage on a planning level with a comprehensive plan really needs to be tightly intertwined and the proposal really is not clear about that. There's the role of the planning commission, whose job it is traditionally to undertake the comprehensive plan. And I think before you would agree to this proposal, I would like to see the comments from the planning commission and see what they feel would be appropriate for this type of survey. I do think you do need to have some end goals in mind and it's not clear in this proposal. To speak to what Monica had to say, I think a communications committee would be very valuable because you know, there's so much that's happened in AI these days, that being able to put together questions that are anonymous, that are well-rounded, that speak to some of the concerns overall that have been voiced tonight regarding financing and different topics of investment. The last point I want to make is I think you need to take a little more time. I'd like to see some proposals from other people. You have one proposal. I'd like to see what other people, uh, in the region who are maybe more familiar with Chester County. I'd like to see what they would have to say about this. And lastly, I really feel that when you do a survey, you're gonna deal with a statistically valid that you've all talked about. Usually it's about twenty-five percent on the, uh, return rate. But there are different ways you could do surveys. Uh, one technique is not. But there are different ways you could do surveys, one technique is not just one survey, but you do a series of. Pulp surveys, I think Monica was referring to this, where you gradually build up. And I just want to remind you all that Eastman's advocacy. Had a survey and a thousand people in this township decided to tell everyone that keeping our township rural was a priority. So, I think you need to take a little more time with it, I understand government. Move slowly and you, you've got it before you and you'd like to get things going. But I think that the Planning Commission should weigh in as well as getting some proposals from other folks. I don't know what you think about that, I'm willing to discuss it further with you.
Chris, as, as you said before. The comp plan will be revised. And I think Joe can probably explain, it's going to progress better than I can, but it's going to be, it's, it's not, it's, we're not going to, what, what we're not going to do. What I plan to do, I should say, is, is to go back and, and start from scratch. We have the nineteen ninety-four plan, which was very, which was very comprehensive. More focused on what the town, on what we believe the township to be, and, and wanted to be, meaning rural. The two thousand twelve plan, or whatever it was, two thousand ten plan. Was shorter, more development friendly, which is not, which is. Contrary to where we're, where we're heading. But it has certain aspects that, that should be included in the new plan. So rather than, rather than, rather than tear up both and start from scratch, the thought was, and the, the objective is. To take the two and use the nineteen ninety-four plan as the base. Bring into that the, the elements of the two thousand, the, the current plan that. That are consistent with, with our, our, our path forward, our mission statement, vision statement. And take into account, of course, the, 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 the input from the residents through the survey.
I do think that the Planning Commission. Could provide a valuable input at this point in time. You know, we all go to a meeting, I understand, not everybody can. But if you would refer it to the Planning Commission for their comment and input, I think that would be valuable on.
Bob had already mentioned that the other boards and committees would be involved. So, so I agree with you Christine, the Planning Commission should be involved.
The scope. You know, working initially with a scope. I know that everybody will have a conversation on a boarding commission, oops, we'll talk with this group, but that's during the process. I'm talking about the actual contract. And having the Planning Commission weigh in on what has been presented to the township. And as I said before, what about some other? Consultants to look at this. And get a proposal, and why do we just have one consultant?
Yeah, please, sure. I will respectfully disagree with you, Chris, this is not the Planning Commission's role. To be able to do these types of things. The Planning Commission can be involved with the. Planning of, you know, working off of developments. But planning financially, I've never heard of a Planning Commission actually spell out responsibilities of plant, of financial planning. I also think this adds to the point of scaling, the result of what you're looking for. You know, is, is the more I hear, the more it keeps making the case of why an independent is to be done. To get someone who is local, Chester County related, again, that's going to steer kind of where, where you want to go. I think you want to keep this open, and I can hear all the consternations and all this other stuff, but. You know, do you, are we afraid of the results we're going to get back to the community? And that's one of the things that I think we want a true feeling from everybody in this community. Are you okay with, you know, whi- which direction the township is to go? Everyone has had an opportunity to participate, whether you do, you don't. You know, you had the opportunity as decisions are, are made. Going here, going forward. Everybody had an opportunity and you want to hear that without leading people to answers that you want.
I don't think I ever said that I wanted to lead anybody, I said that there are good questions that could be formed. And the point that I'm trying to say, I'm certainly not afraid of the results, I, I think. The voice of the residents. Will be very interesting to hear what they have to say. I think that we could look at other consultants, so we don't just look at one. And. I understand on the financial level what you're saying, Bob, and all the constraints that are currently facing us. But the Planning Commission, clearly in the state legislative mandate. Is for them to be working on the comprehensive plan. I'm just saying, I think they should have a chance to look this over and give input. That's what I'm saying.
They'll have their opportunity at the comprehensive plan, but when you're trying to get an independent survey, that's responsibility that falls within the board. And their jurisdiction, because I'm not sure what the Planning Commission actually provides to you. I don't think they provide anything.
Managing this aspect of the meeting, I would like to say right now, I think we have a lot of, of good comments here. But it, it really comes down to the, the essential part that I was looking for was. Some more of an agreement, so I would like to consider tabling this, we tabled it last time, tabled it again, because we really haven't seen. What I was looking for as far as milestones and some contractual arrangement. So that we could look at, right now, we have the same proposal as before, and we haven't seen some of the specifics that we talked about. Unless, I am not stating this correctly, because I don't recall seeing that in there. Yes, go ahead, please.
Mr. Chairman, I believe right now the motion is a little wide open, but perhaps if the motion were to also include. A termination for convenience clause that had to be added into the contract. And also a first step of creating milestones. As part of the process that township goes through, I believe you may be able to move forward if the board so desires to do that. Just to get this process moving forward to the next phase. And then, once those milestones are created, we would bring that back to the board, of course, with this consultant. And if at that time, the township, the board does not want to move forward, it's done there.
Could you give us some language that we could add to the motion that would be appropriate?
Sure, Mr. Chairman, but if, if someone were to make the motion that Eastman's Board of Supervisors. Approves the proposal from the Impact Group to conduct a township-wide survey in an amount of thirty-three thousand dollars, not to exceed thirty-three thousand dollars. Provided that the township has a termination for convenience clause in the contract and milestones will be developed and. Presented to the Board of Supervisors as a first step. I think that may be the motion you're looking for.
Second.
Well, I think somebody has to make the motion.
I made that motion. Need a second.
I'll second it.
And I'll add one more thing, well.
I, I, I'll just say. I'm a little concerned because the motion does allow us to go up to thirty-three thousand and. I haven't, again, I haven't seen the, the contract, and again, I understand.
Mr. Chairman, we could amend that motion to cap that number at fifteen thousand, as Mr. Zinkowski had suggested. But I, I believe really the first. The first phase of this should not even approach the fifteen. I think the first phase of this study with the creation of the milestones, but by the time it comes back here, it won't even be approaching fifteen, let alone thirty-three.
I would, I would assume that, right?
Yes.
I haven't seen any specifics, but that's what, that's what I'm hoping to see, and that's what I would.
We, we will make sure that that is the case.
Okay, how about we amend it to the fifteen, everything that you just mentioned could. I'll put, I'll put forward the motion of everything that was just said here with the, the appropriate. Amendments. Does everyone, is everyone clear with that? That they would be acceptable to what was just stated?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, do I have a second? Okay. All in favor? Oh, okay, hold on.
For, for our record. Haley, do you understand the motion?
She's going to, she's going to explain it tomorrow when. Okay, so all in favor? Hi.
Hi. Thank you.
I'd like to see us add to the next, either, add to the agenda for the next meeting. Formalizing the, and adding numbers to the Communication, Communications Committee.
I am moving on to a business agenda, item E. I move that Eastman Township Board of Supervisors authorized the advertisement of a request for proposal, RFP for Township Pension Plan Provider Services. Do I have a second?
Mr. Chairman, a bit of context. This is a necessary step because the current provider for the township's plan is getting out of the business, so as a result. The best kind of case scenario would be to go out to RFP, there are a couple of firms that have been interested, but this allows us. To vet those firms.
No comments, any questions from the public or anything online? I don't see anything online.
I call the question.
Okay, all in favor? Bye.
Abstain.
Okay, so now we're on to item F on the agenda. I move that the Eastman Township Board of Supervisors approved the proposal from MOR Construction. Inc. to perform the emergency road pipe replacement on Holman Mill Road in an amount not to exceed. One hundred forty-nine thousand six hundred dollars, do I have a second? Okay, we're not going to talk about it tonight, I guess, no seconds.
I think we need more.
Well, do I have a second so we can talk about it?
I'll second it for, just for, just for discussion purposes. So there are a number of exclusions and exceptions here that I, I just, I, I, I don't, I don't understand. We're talking at work on Holman Road, it's a fairly narrow road. The contractor is not, says he's not going to provide flagging or, or traffic control, which to me is utterly absurd. To make us responsible for all signs and cones when you're closing the road, no, that's his responsibility. He says that if existing driveways are damaged, they have to replace one part, it's a change order. I'm not sure if that would be the case, that he's, he's responsible to take, to take, to take appropriate care. He's talking about not being responsible for his seat, I guess, but he's not, he'll have no responsibility whatsoever. For property restoration, so if it's not done properly, he walks away. I mean, in short, there are way too many conditions here. And exclusions that I think are completely unacceptable.
Okay, so we can go back to the contractor and work through some of those. I read those probably from a different lens, so I'm happy to have a conversation about some of those terms and, and, and go for that. In terms of like the seating and restoration ones, that's on us to make sure that when we're there, we make sure that they restore it properly. What he's worried about, I believe, is rain that occurs a week later, no water, and then he has to come back and restore it again. Like, those are the type of things that he's worried about, that, I think that's what that's about. But either way, I understand the exclusion list is pages long.
Yeah.
Right, so I get that, but if you guys don't mind, I just want to describe the, the. Process in general, so. Or, so if you really look at it here, the, the pipe replacement in the road is the absolute piece that needs to be done. In order to fix the, the situation out there, the other ones are like the pipe replacement in the yard could be done at a later date, it could be done differently. But it's just, you're there, if you want to do it, and then on top of that. The upstairs, the upstream swell restoration, driveway replacement, things like that, it, it's kind of built. So that you have choices as to how far you want to take this.
To, to help everyone understand this too, because we talked about emergency repair, but we haven't really specified. This, because in the document here talks about the collapse in the sinkhole, could you just elaborate just for the public, just so they can understand what? What has happened?
Is that where that, the plate is?
Yes, yes, so, so what has happened is that there was a pipe collapse, and this was part of our study, we did. During our cleating and jetting, we did notify this one as one that needed further investigation, and then during the storm. It, you know, what we believe is that the joints blew out and that, that's what caused the sinkhole and caused the pipe collapse. So, so the immediate repair and what's underneath the road is what you see as item number one, which is the fifty-two thousand. I'm with you in the fact that like whole driveway replacement because there, or driveway repair, because there's driver replacement in the contract, if you look at it, so. But we can go through this list and, and narrow these down with the contractor. Moore is a, a company that I use in other municipalities that I represent, they are a CoStar vendor. They probably do some work up here as well, but again. We can get, you know, other numbers, we can, we can narrow this down, those, those terms and conditions down. But that, I just wanted to explain in, in general that this proposal was designed to give you options. And I think that the reason the terms are pages long is because I think they regurgitated the terms per option. And so I think that that's, but I'm with you, and I always say when your exclusions are bigger than your scope, something's wrong. But, but again, I think that when I read these. I can just picture where they experienced that before, like my favorite one, I think, was the. Hand, like, they're not responsible for footprints, handprints and writing in concrete, right? So, that was my favorite one, number seven.
Yeah, I see it.
Yeah.
About permits, inspections or inspection fees.
So, being a municipality, you're really not subject to them anyway, so it's really not an exclusion, because you're not getting, we're not getting any permits for them. It'd be permanent from ourselves. So. The vehicular and the traffic control and the cones, I'm with you on that one, we can see what that is. You know, I think Jason in Public Works would probably. Probably already had the cones and things like that, but, but traffic control and flaggers, it's a different story.
Yeah, no, we are not taking that responsibility, that's a contractor's obligation.
Understood completely, so we can work through that, that piece. But again, when I read these, I, it's funny to me because I can imagine every single one that created these terms, right? So, I get it, but again, I think it's, it's just unfortunate because you see it then go on and on and on and on, so.
I, I, I think, I think we need to send this back. Gentlemen, and let Bob and Mike scan with the contractor and. Come up with something far more reasonable on what we're seeing here.
If, if we, if you don't mind during this discussion period, then would you provide any? Guidance on which one of the options you'd like? Like, would you like it to be taken through the yard, past the yard, down the swales, or do you think sticking to the road is what you'd prefer?
Mike, let's tell, tell us, are these integrated, are these, back integrated? Or are they separate, are they separate?
What we would, that, right now, like, when you did it just in the, in the road, you would add a structure there to make the joint between the two. Because right now they are integrated, and so what we would do is add that joint there.
If, if we don't, if we simply do, put onto the other, put onto the other two. Will that affect any way ship perform the work that you're doing on the, on the.
No, no. So, it wouldn't like to track from it, make it last, like, wouldn't take away from it and make it cause damage later, nothing like that, no.
What, so what, what makes that work necessary to be done? Yeah, the options.
The options, it's necessary to be done just because it would complete the project, you know, we would come back and have to probably address that other fight at some other point. So why, why should you just not do it?
Why do it, you know? Why not do it? Do it all together, it'd be cheaper if we did it all now instead of waiting later.
Right, and then, and it is private property. However, you know, we can work through the easements and, and things like that, the neighbor was, if I remember, I think.
There are four residents that are affected by this, that's what I saw on here.
I believe that. Jason had talked to him, is that correct? So I think that everybody had at least verbally understood what was going on, and we would just go through the process with Joe to, to do easements for them.
What came across the album cleared news, as I went through this, is these contractors giving us various prices. But he's, he said in the case, to nickel and diamonds. I mean, multiple, multiple, multiple of the mobilizations.
So to me, I think that he's. I've just worked with them forever, so I, I would tell you that. He's had it set where, you know, if you guys called him and said we're going to do number one, and then call back and go, wait, now we're going to do number two. He's saying the price is going to increase if you do it separately, that's what that means to him. But I understand where you're coming from, but, and we can go back and clean all that up, but it basically. I would have wrote that, that if you choose to do options one, two, three and four in different stages, then additional mobilizations would. Rather than just writing additional mobilizations might be.
I'll grant you that there's probably, just poorly worded, but I, I've, I've seen things too many times and. No. This, 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 this needs to be, this needs to be redone.
Yeah.
And I'd like to see the terms and conditions of the contract as well. This is not the contract.
Understood, so would you, but again, do you want to continue with the full scope? Or would you, you don't see the benefit in doing certain?
Well, I see, no, no, I see that they're doing the full scope, if, if, in other words, if the work has to be done. Let's get it done.
Okay, so we'll go back, we'll, we'll, we'll work through.
That's my personal view. That's my personal view. I'm, I can't, I can't speak for.
The one thing, the one thing that really helps, I think, with the discussion is is the picture here that we have and and so maybe, you know, if we could just elaborate on this, I think this will help us to move forward. I I do agree with Mark that probably should.
Kelly, can we project this by any chance?
So, so there's, the pipe goes on an angle across Holman Road, Helman Mill Road. And so you see from, sorry for the board's benefit, from here to that black dot on the other side of Helman Road.
Yeah.
That is the road portion, that's number one. Then you have this longer section here, which is number two. And then that would bring into play the driveway restoration with it as well. And then, you know, regrading, and then also going towards this number over here, the yellow extends. That piece is where the swell would be recreated.
And that's the outflow. Yeah.
What's the current condition of the site with regards to safety?
Well, it's plated now. It'll be done, it need to be done, addressed. But again, if, let's just say it got worse. What would happen is Jason would have to remobilize, replate, add a second plate, or address it. He could temporarily fill it with stone, do other things. If it were to get worse, but yeah, it's not something I would suggest you leave go for many months. But at the same time, definitely want to handle it before the winter.
Sure.
But at the same time, I think you have a month if you want to table this and go for it.
So the section that's in the grassy area of that person's property, is that in danger of collapse in any way?
No, this situation will not make it worse, if you think about that. The water is going into the ground, so what would happen is that the 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 area, the depression of the road and so on would get larger. That's what would happen with let go.
And around that plated area, is there any danger that that could collapse if, say, a trash truck or a school bus were to drive over it?
The steel plate would, it can handle a ser, a significant amount of weight.
Talking about beyond the steel plate.
Right, so what would happen is in rainstorms, and and most likely, it's probably on Jason's radar, where he has his crew walking by, you know, regularly. Every rainstorm fall, it should be inspected and just double check. And you would have to watch that.
So it would make sense to reframe this motion such that we could possibly agree to the scope of the work that's to be done. But subject to the terms and the conditions that you have issues, that you guys have issues with. So we reframe the motion to say that we'll go forward, subject to the terms and conditions that our solicitor and our engineer would work out that are more reasonable to what you're looking for.
Exclusions, exceptions, and terms and conditions.
They they have to be reframed, so we can move it forward, get moving it forward, subject to what you just.
So.
And what is one thing there, the cost, that's for the complete restoration of everything. That's not just in pieces.
Correct.
It's the whole, it's the whole shebang.
Right, but but understand, we go back and sell them. You're doing this, you're doing the traffic control. So let's just keep that in mind.
No, the price stays the same.
Well, I think it should, but.
So here's, if I, if I'm hearing what you're saying, and if I can re rephrase this a little bit, so. So. In terms of the process here, items A and B on your agenda tonight came to you as suggestions and and ideas a couple of months back. And then what we've done from the, from there is you guys gave an okay to that scope, then we turned around and actually issued the contracts. And those contracts are what's on your resolution for tonight. So if I'm hearing that the scope of work is the same, can I be so forward as to work out the terms and conditions and have them create a contract that would allow us to make process and progress next month?
No, I think what this motion was, was work out the contract, subject to the terms and conditions that the manager and solicitor and engineer are comfortable with, and it moves forward. There wouldn't need to be a requirement to come back before this board next month, provided that the amount didn't change. But it allows the contract to move forward, it allows the contractor to start to mobilize, provided that we've worked out those terms and conditions, so. Mr. Brancato, I will make sure that you say it before anything goes anywhere.
So I will amend the emotion based off of what was just discussed.
Yes, that is correct, yes. So I already made the motion, you just need a second.
Second.
A second. Is there's nothing, any questions? I don't see anything online. Okay.
Call the question.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, that brings us to the end of the business agenda, and I'll open up the floor to public comment. Is there any public comment from the, please?
Being part of the historical commission, I'd like to invite everyone here to our next lecture under the stars, which will be held in this room, so you're in air conditioning, not have to worry about the heat outside. And it's going to be about the canal and the Vincent Canal, which is originally, Spring City was part of Vincent Township until they became a town of their own. So find out what the Vincent Canal effect has had on this area. So please come on August twenty third. It's a Saturday at seven o'clock. Love to see you there.
Thank you.
You really missed a good one, not coming to, to hear Betsy Ross. She was fabulous. The room was electric with excitement. It was wonderful. So that we counted forty nine people to come.
That's a lot.
From the area.
That's good.
Isn't that a wonderful?
Yeah.
Yeah, Sandy, while you're up. Is the commi, is the commission developing any plans for the two hundred fifty, two hundred fifty anniversary of the crossing of the Schuylkill in twenty twenty seven?
We have been hoping, I mean, uh, let's say eighteen months ago, the board passed that we would support that and that the that the Parkerford Tavern would be a part of it. And here we sit, we haven't gotten anywhere.
Well.
So we know about the Parkerford Tavern. So we're going to feature the Fourth of July and hope to do a little bit more there. I would love to do something with crossing the Schuylkill River, but we feel that the Parkerford Tavern is a big part of that as well. And I do encourage whatever you can. I know there's been a couple of surveys done and and reports have been given. I'm just hoping that the board supports some part of that. Even if it's repairing the door, which we've had already ten thousand dollars donated by another, another society. It would be nice to be moving ahead with some of it.
Excellent.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Hello?
Excuse me.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yep, we can hear you, we can hear you.
So when I was on the, this is Elaine Malito, three seventy Holman Mill Road. When I was on the Planning Commission back around two thousand and ten, I attended a two-day conference on comprehensive plan and how it should be initiated and done and that kind of thing. So I I know a lot about it. Without having any of the, the state documents in front of me, I do know that it's the Planning Commission that is primarily responsible for preparing the comprehensive plan. And it's also responsible for reviewing and updating the plan periodically, typically every ten years. And also, the planning commissions are the ones that are supposed to be facilitating public participation, ensuring that the comprehensive plan reflects the community's values and priorities. So this, I I just know all this, and there's a lot more, I'm sure. But so why are we taking a different approach on this? I don't understand that. That's my comment. And I I'd also, while I'm here, I'd just like to say something about the EAC, the role of the EAC, oh, and the township. The township had a wonderful tree giveaway, and it was very successful. It was just a whole collaborative effort between the township paying for the trees, Jason from Public Works delivering the trees and keeping them alive. And the EAC helping to find out who wanted to plant the trees. And we planted, we distributed over fifty trees, so that's.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Oh, yes.
Monica Scriber, Valley Creek Lane. I took the Frick's Lock Tour probably a month ago from with these, that East Coventry has, and I know they preserve that that land because of the power plant, and the power plant owns it. But they actually uncovered famous soldiers that bunked in the barn recently, their signatures on the rafters of the barn. And so you look at these locks, and then you realize we have locks. And you think that is something that that township should be so proud of. Now, again, the power plant is they're getting grants and things, and the power plant is helping maintain the property. But what a sense of pride in their community. And so I look at our mission about the Hopewell Bigwood Preservation and Mark how you came in right away and 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 did what you needed to do to preserve that. And then I drive around Penhurst. Kurt and I drove around a couple of weekends ago. And if you look at what Pennsylvania must have looked like when it was the Vincent's. That has to be pretty darn close to what our area looked like. And so I understand it's privately owned, I get it. But my goodness, what a piece of heritage that area is in Chester County and in our township. So I need to shift. When FPRs came to East Coventry Township, they created a steering committee because there are a lot of risks in FPRs. And the steering committee met for months. And they came up with guide rails for the FPRs. And now we are the planning commission has been tasked to create an ordinance for data centers. And anybody who's researching data centers knows there are many, many environmental risk. And so I'm asking that at the next, the the people are researching this. And I don't think anybody who's gotten up and talked, based on my research, none of their concerns are unfounded based on the amount of years people are living around data centers. And so what I found at the last planning commission meeting was that we ran out of time because there were other things on the agenda. And it almost seems like there has to be a different format in that people can comment. Because the planning commission can't sit, I mean, they have their lives, right? I don't have a life, I guess, with the amount of time I'm researching. But it's really important for those of us that are researching, and we see, it's, this isn't, this isn't woo woo stuff. These are ac actually studies and statistics of things that need to be in our ordinance. To protect our residents, our natural resources, our wildlife. And so we need to have some sort of a format. I'm asking you for help at the next planning commission meeting, because we have to get the ordinance done as well. Nobody's disputing that. But if you look at the FPR process, I mean, we were fortunate enough to take what was created from East Coventry, and we were come on now.
Steel.
Our little stellar. But anyway, we were fortunate enough to take their work and, you know, make it ours to accommodate our township. So this isn't a light thing. And so I I don't know what the best approach is and.
Monica, me, I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
But Bob, we can, we can have at least one town hall meeting on this. And that's what, that's, that's what you were.
I think that would be fantastic, because there are concerns, and we're not, we're not able to address everything.
Yeah.
And we need to have that, yes. Perfect.
Well, just one thing.
If I can, to that point, I would look at trying to do something early September, because I know there's a lot of vacations that take place in August here, kids getting ready to go back to school. I think we'd want to make sure that we get enough word out, give us enough time to host that here, so.
Thank you.
Sure, and we'll try to get that out sometime.
Perfect.
No, early, 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 early next week, we'll try to get a date. And then we can start moving that information out.
And and I under, Monica, I understand, you know, the communities and your concerns about the data centers, but at the same time, nothing has been brought forward to us yet. We are trying to get ahead of some of this, you know, with the ordinance.
Sure.
The one thing we as the board can't do is is to engage in speculation about what could happen, because we don't have anything before us, right? But I, but all of our concerns, you know, they they need to be discussed, and and they're, and and they are being discussed as as we went to the was it two months ago, the last planning commission meeting, there, we're going through it. But I, I, what I would say is that the board, hopefully, I'm speaking for the other two. We don't want to get into speculation where some of this can go off on a tangent and go really wild.
Oh.
And I really want to avoid that.
Yeah, I don't, I I think ma mainly the conversations that I've seen in the planning commission have been very concerned, individuals that are not bringing any kind of conjecture, but are bringing people who are experiencing this and the, and what they're experiencing. And so putting the right guide rails in place, just like we did with the FPR, it's no different. And that's, I I I would, I don't think it will go that way. I don't, not with this guy helping us.
Well, look, the purpose of a town hall meeting is to, is solicit comments from the residents. And every resident who comes to that microphone will say his or her piece, whether we like it or not. And that's, that's, that's why, that's why, that's why that input is needed. So I mean, I, to me, it's, 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 uh, there are, there are no conditions on what we're going to hear.
Okay, thank you for that. And then just my final comment, based on Mark, what you were saying about the comprehensive plan and how we need to work on, take something nineteen ninety four plan as a base, and then look at the other plans and add to them to develop our, our current comprehensive plan. I think your PC needs to hear that from you. I really do.
That has been said from this, from this, this desk multiple times. When I was chairperson last year, I said it. So we've, it's, we've been upfront about this repeatedly. This is, this is not new.
Then I would recommend you watch June's PC meeting, because from the sound of it, they don't know what direction to go in. And the supervisor handbook, anybody who reads through that, it tells you very clearly, this is the PC's job. We need them. I mean, that, that's part of their job is to to create that. So just wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I don't see anything online. Okay.
Move to a turn?
Yep, put a motion forward to adjourn the meeting. Do I have a second?
I just moved.
Oh, you did. Sometimes you steal it from me. Are you asking for it? I'll second.
Call the question.
I don't know if I want to answer you. All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.